Good evening. I call the March 14, 2023 Regular Board Meeting of the Richland 2 School Board of Trustees to order. May I have a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve the March 14, 2023 Regular Board Meeting Agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
There's an item on the agenda that I was uncertain about. It was the Discussion of Employment Matter Regarding Hiring of a Superintendent. I just won't be able to support the agenda tonight because I'm not sure of what the discussion would be. I did talk to Ms. Agostini a little while ago trying to seek clarification and she did try to explain it to the best of her abilities, but I'm still not positive that that would be something that would be discussed in executive session and not publicly. I know if it's about the process of hiring a superintendent, I believe that it's something that we should discuss in the public. But again, I may be wrong on it, but just because I'm not sure, I won't be able to support the approval of the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. And the Discussion of Superintendent Search is an item that must be discussed only in executive session. So thank you for sharing that. And Ms. Agostini, just for the public and those who are watching, Ms. Agostini is not present with us in person, but she is here with us via the telephone. I call the motion for a vote. If we could take a vote, please. We are going to do a hand vote. So if we can take a hand vote, please, by raise of hand, the motion for going into executive session.
Madam Chair, we're voting on the approval of the agenda.
Yes, approval of the agenda. Thank you, Mrs. Agostini.
And I vote in the affirmative.
If you could raise your hand up high for the approval of the agenda. That's four yes, three no, the motion carries. Two no, four yes. Ms. McFadden is not here with us at the moment. 3.1 Executive Session. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Nash.
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing receipt of legal advice regarding dissolution of the Richland 2 Charter School, receipt of legal advice regarding a contractual matter, student admission request into the District Audit Education Program, student appeals, breach of contracts, employment recommendations and certified releases, and a discussion of an employment matter regarding hiring of superintendent.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. And this is also a hand vote. Mrs. Agostini, what's your vote?
I vote in the affirmative, yes.
That's six yes, zero no. The motion passes. The board will enter into executive session. Good evening. As you can see, Mrs. Agostini is not present with us today. However, she will join us on the line shortly. At this time, may I have a motion to end executive session?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp?
I move that we ended executive session at 6:32 and that we reconvene a regular session.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. Mr. Trapp, have you checked the motion to make sure it's correct, please? The motion was actually made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. Nash. If you guys can make that correction for me, please. Thank you. Now, Mr. Trapp, if you would check that for me?
Yes, that's correct now.
If we can have a hand vote for Mrs. Porter and Mrs. McFadden? Okay. Did you receive the hand vote for Mrs. McFadden? Okay, great. The vote is six yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will resume the public session. We will now move into the Inspirational Moment. Yes. Oh, Mrs. Agostini, thank you for joining us.
I'm sorry, I got booted out about 15 minutes ago, but I abstained on that vote.
Okay, thank you. We now see that.
Thank you.
So the vote is now six yes, zero no, and one extension. Thank you, Mrs. Agostini, for joining us. Again, we will move to 4.1 Inspirational Moment. We will now move to the Inspirational Moment and Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's Inspirational Moment will be provided by Mrs. Tamika Washington. If you would introduce that person for us, please.
Madam Chair and members of the board and our attendees, I would like to introduce to you Kimberly Cersey. She is a transformational coach, licensed therapist, and master trainer with more than 25 years of successfully leading efforts that empower, promote, and facilitate the building facilitate the building of healthy people and communities. Kimberly is a sought-after speaker, consultant, and transformational leader. She is a co-active coach and holds state and national certifications as a trainer. She's skilled in curriculum development, instructor-led and virtual training delivery, group facilitation, and coaching for improved performance. She is accompanied tonight by her daughter Bella. Bella is a fourth grader at Pontiac Elementary. She is a voice voyager and has co-authored her first book, I Know My Voice.
Thank you so much for having us on tonight. We're here because, the same reason why you're here, because we believe that you are committed to education, committed to the success of students, and watching them grow. And you're actually making decisions for the next set of world changers that will shape our world as we move forward. And that's one of the things that I'm passionate about as well. And I'm a product of Richland 1, I'm a parent in Richland 2. And one of the things that has made me most successful in my career with all the accolades, I always get surprised when people read that, like, that's me. But one of the things that made me successful is having a voice. And not just having a voice, but being taught how to use that voice and how to harness the power of my voice. And so one of the things that I want to leave with you tonight and encourage you to do is give students a voice. So as you are making the decisions, as you are establishing rules and standards and everything that needs to happen, make sure that the student's voice is included in that. And not just them having sound, because what research shows is that only 7% of voice is what we say. The rest of it is how we show up. And we don't help our students enough harness the power of how they're showing up. So they're just showing up. So they know how to use their voice, they haven't learned how to position their voice. So the reason Bella is here is because two years ago, I partnered with Dr. Katrina Hutchins on her work with voice and the voice positioning system, and we created a voice leadership camp. And with voice leadership camp, we targeted Richland 2 and other schools around the Midlands. And Bella has participated in cohorts 1 and 2 of voice leadership camp, and she has had the opportunity to co-author a book with Dr. Katrina Hutchins. So I'm not going to be the one doing all of the speaking tonight. I'm going to toss it over to her because Bella knows her voice. And her book is one in a series of seven books called My Voice is Powerful. And her book is called I Know My Voice. So I'm not going to continue to tell you what I do. I'm going to let you see the product of what I do.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I will be reading my book, I Know My Voice. Hi, my name is Isabella, and this one thing is true. I know my voice. Do you know your voice too? I know my voice. My voice has its very own sound. It lives inside me. It is speaking even when no one is around. I know my voice. My voice is strong. It is my superpower in all the spaces and places where I belong. I know my voice. My voice is kind. It is a great treasure. It is a rare find. I know my voice. My voice is cheerful. It speaks to my heart to be courageous every time I am fearful. I know my voice. My voice is healing. It gives others joy and laughter and lots of good feelings. I know my voice. My voice is caring. It shines brightest when I am thoughtful, helpful, and sharing. I know my voice. In just a few words, my voice is entertaining, inspirational, and enjoyable. It is how I'm heard. I know my voice. My voice is empowering and confident, but not at all demanding. It is filled with respect for others and eager for understanding. I know my voice. My voice is the best part of me. It fights for us right, generates light, and encourages others to be free. I know my voice. How about you? Stand up straight, raise your voice, and shout all the things you know about your voice too. Please stand as I lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for your voice, Bella. We're going to continue with 5.1 Recognition of National School Board Certified Teachers. Tonight, we are honored to recognize teachers in our district who has been recently designated or re-designated as National Board Certified Teachers. Mrs. Gregory, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. We welcome to the podium Executive Director of Teacher Quality, Michelle Taylor Brown, who will lead us off tonight. And we're excited about welcoming our National Board Certified Teachers this evening.
And board members, if we can have you guys go and stand in the front, please, along with Mrs. Gregory.
Mrs. Agostini, Board Chair, Dr. Scott, Board Vice Chair, Mrs. Gregory, Interim Superintendent, and Richland School District 2 Board of Trustees. We would like to recognize our first-time National Board Certified Teachers as well as our teachers who earn National Board Certification for a second and some of them for even a third time. National Board Certification requires teachers to demonstrate content knowledge, reflect on student work samples, video, and analyze their teaching practice, and document the impact of assessment and collaboration on student learning. It was created so that teachers, just as professionals in other fields, could achieve distinction by demonstrating that they can meet high and rigorous standards for what accomplished teachers should know and be able to do. We would like to congratulate our National Board Certified Teachers. And we'll start off with our first-time recipients from the Center for Inquiry, Tiffany Palmetier. From Joseph Keels Elementary, Katie Litten. From Round Top Elementary, Jessica Bennett. Let's congratulate our first-time National Board Certified Teachers. Now for our renewals. From Bridge Creek Elementary, Karen Hall. From Catawba Trail Elementary, as well as the District Office, Chrissy Cook. Jackson Creek Elementary, Sade Collins. Killian Road Elementary, Pamela Hare. Killian Road Elementary, Rita Riley. Polo Road Elementary, Brittany Daniels. Round Top Elementary, Amy Novak. Sand Leopard Elementary, Lisa Dawkins. Windsor Elementary, Jennifer Boone. E.L. Wright Middle, Calvinetta Brown. E.L. Wright Middle, Connie Jordan. Summit Parkway, Summit Parkway Middle, excuse me, Maria Lee. From Blackwood High, Pam Davis. From Richland Northeast High School, Andrew Chambers. From Richland Northeast High School, Narkeisha Schofield. From Spring Valley High School, Kimberly Boucher. Also from Spring Valley, Andrea Klutz. Regina Dilly, Spring Valley High School. Melissa Disinger, Spring Valley High School. Lane Seisloff, Spring Valley High School. And Sandra Wells, Spring Valley High School. Marty Brown, from Westwood High School. And Renee McCray, from the District Office.
Once again, thank you to all of our National Board Certified Teachers. Thank you. We're going to move to Item 6.1 Approval of Consent Agenda. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The consent agenda has been properly moved by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mr. Trapp. Are there any discussion? The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Now we will move into 7.1 Public Participation. We do have four individuals who have signed up to address the board. Before you address the board, I'm going to read something to you. Before we begin, I will remind all speakers that each person is limited to three minutes and that our meetings are streamed live and recorded. According to Policy BEDH, comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive and vulgar language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual school personnel or any other person connected with the school system. Specific questions, students, or personnel issues should be addressed through the appropriate procedures as indicated in the district policy. Questions asked during public participation typically will be referred to a staff member for a response at a later time. We're going to move with Shakira Vail. Is Shakira Vail here? Okay, next on the list, we have Gus Philpott.
Good evening, members of the board and superintendent. My first comments are on the PSA, the Safety Public Service Announcement that was issued by Richland 2, was produced by Richland 2. It's a great production. A lot of time and effort went into the production of it. And I hope that you have watched it, and I hope that each member of the audience has watched it. I hope that every viewer and every parent and every student has watched it. And I ask you to communicate with the board and with the superintendent your opinion of that PSA, because mine isn't very high. I don't think that there is even one student in the Richmond 2 School District who's going to benefit from that PSA. Every student already knows that if you bring a gun to school or you pull a fire alarm or you phone in a false threat, that you're going to be disciplined for it. Every student already knows that. And I don't think we need a quote "conversation" about that with the students. What we need is to explain to the students that if they do those things, it's wrong and they're out of here. That's not a conversation. That's a directive to the students and one that every student ought to agree with. The first school board meeting that I attended was five years ago. It was two weeks after the shootings at Parkland, Florida. I submitted to the school district a couple of recommendations for improving school safety. They went nowhere. And here we are, five years later, finally with a safety committee that's going to meet for the first time next week. 6 o'clock, I guess maybe right here in this room, 6 o'clock, one week from tonight. And I asked all the parents and students and staff members and teachers and community members to be here and take part in improving the safety of this school district. I would also ask that $1 million not be spent on a, I'm trying to remember exactly what the title of it is. It's a Crisis Alert System. $1 million on a crisis alert system. Now, I would be okay with spending $1 million on a crisis prevention system. But once the crisis has occurred and you lock the school and maybe lock in the shooter or lock in the other people, or send a message out to the parents that, oh, we have a crisis today, let's prevent the next crises and not just send out an alert after you're done. So please be here next week, one week from tonight, 6 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philpott. Our next speaker, Ken Spencer. Is Ken Spencer here? Okay, we'll move to the next person. Is it Lane Seisloff?
All right, hear me? Good, okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Lane Seisloff, and I was just in front of you. I'm a teacher here in this district, and I stood with seven other, or was supposed to stand with seven other people from my school and many others around the district that are being recognized for National Board Certification today. Within our group of eight from Spring Valley, we have 175 years of educational experience. We have 116 of those years in Richland 2 and 99 of them at Spring Valley High School. So in total, we have 19 degrees, with most of us having at least a master's degree. That's a lot of experience. All that said, my hope was to give you just a sliver of what you can see in terms of our educational experience at Spring Valley, but also to remind you that we are just a fraction of the teachers in our district that have that much strength behind their names. I'm in front of you today and right now because I have made this district my home for the last 13 years. I came to this district from Ohio. I moved here for this job because I was recruited from Ohio. But I am very concerned about teacher retention. So I wanted to bring up two points. My first point is there is a lack of teacher voice in decision-making in this district. At Spring Valley, I teach biology, which is an EOC course. I spend every pep Wednesday with my colleagues analyzing the data that we all know has declined drastically over the last five years. Unfortunately, that data only paints part of the picture. The data does not allow you to see that in my classes last semester, I had over 600 missing, incomplete, and late assignments from students. It does not show the excessive absence. It does not show the massive number of tardies in my first-period class. Due to benchmarking and a strict pacing guide, I'd no longer have the autonomy to rearrange the sequence of my curriculum to accommodate for unexpected disruptions, including lockdowns, including emergency evacuations due to threats. A lot is resting on the shoulders of the EOC teachers, and a hyper-focus on data has left me and many of my colleagues dreading Wednesday mornings. Data-driven collaboration is the goal with this newly revised pep time, but it has been my observation that it has created isolated islands within the school and decreased joy amongst faculty. I won't say that collaboration and data are important because they are absolutely very important, but they are only part of what we need to do to enhance teaching and learning in this district. It is time to include our teachers and their expertise in decision-making, which brings me to my second point. And this is a harder one to hear, I'm sure. The lowering of expectation- The lowering of expectations in the name of equity has led to decreased student motivation and an uncomfortable, often unsafe, working environment. Weapons are only a part of what make me feel unsafe and uncomfortable. The bigger problem has been interactions between students and adults. While most of the behaviors, I redirect teenage behaviors, but I have been threatened this year. I have been the subject of profane language and/or disrespect on a daily basis. COVID did a number on our mental health of our students, but we're not doing him a favor by lowering expectations. Expectation changes, I'm talking about include but are not limited to grading floor attendance policies, content recovery, credit recovery, and discipline standards.
If you would finish your...
Yep, I'm almost done.
Okay.
Okay. And theoretically, many of these changes that we're proposing to create equity are great, but at the expense of allowing young adults to leave our schools without understanding accountability. And it's added additional load to us. So remember, we have lots of experience in this district, and I wouldn't be lying, or I would be lying if I didn't tell you I'm ready to leave education. And it's a sentiment that a lot of teachers feel. So I want to, if we want to retain top-tier teachers, it's time to listen to their voices and to trust their expertise. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. We're moving to 8.0, Voting on Executive Session Items. The board would now vote on items discussed in executive session. 8.1, Delusion of the Richland Two Charter School. May I please have a motion regarding delusion of the Richland Two Charter School?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
I move to formally dissolve the Richland Two Charter School as of March 14, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Trapp. Any discussion? The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mr. Trapp. Board members, any discussion? Board members, please vote. Mrs. Washington, would you please check the motion to verify? The vote is seven yes. No, seven. Yes, seven, I'm sorry, six yes, one no. The motion passes. 8.2, Student Admission Request into the District Adult Education Program. May I please have a motion regarding student admission requests into the district adult education program?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Nash?
I move to approve the student admission request into the district's adult education program for students one through three.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion passes. Student Appeals. We will address student appeals individually. May I have a motion for student appeals?
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Nash?
I move to send student number one to Blythewood Academy for the remainder of the year.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. Mrs. Nash, please check the motion. It's correct. The motion is seven yes, the motion passes. May I have a motion for student number two?
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Nash?
I move to deny the appeal for student number two.
May I have a second?
A second.
The motion have been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Nash, please check the motion.
That is correct.
Board members, please vote. The motion is five yes, two no, the motion passes. May I have a motion for student number three?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Nash?
I move to deny the appeal for student number three.
Is there a second?
A second.
The motion have been properly moved by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Nash, please check the motion.
That is correct.
Board members, please vote. Six yes, one no, the motion passes. May I have a motion for student number four?
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Nash?
I move to deny the appeal for student number four.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been properly moved by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? No discussion, board members, please vote. Seven yes, the motion passes. May I have a motion for student number five?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Nash?
I move to send student number five back to school with strict probation. To their homeschool. I'll say that again. I move to send student number five back to their homeschool with strict probation.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion have been properly moved by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Agostini?
And I'm sorry, I got cut off from executive session, but I just want to be clear, I thought the decision had been made by administration that the student was to go to that school on strict probation.
Administration made their decision, but the board has made a different decision, Mrs. Agostini.
Okay, can you please repeat the motion?
Yes. The motion was made by Mrs. Nash, and that motion is to return student number five, is that five? Student number five back to their homeschool with strict probation.
Okay, and that was not what was decided before. Is that correct then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Mrs. Nash, please check the motion.
That is correct.
Board members, please vote. The motion is seven yes. The motion passes. May I have a motion for student number six?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Nash?
I move to uphold the administration's decision for student number six.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been properly moved by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? There is no discussion. Mrs. Nash, if you would check the motion.
That is correct.
Board members, please vote. Seven yes, the motion passes. May I have a motion for student number seven?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Nash?
I move to send student number seven to Blythewood Academy for the remainder of the school year with family intervention services.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been properly moved by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? There is no discussion. Mrs. Nash, please check the motion, verify.
That is correct.
Board members, please vote. Seven yes, the motion passes. 8.4, Employment Recommendation and Certified Releases. May I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Agostini?
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. Seven yes, the motion passes. We're going to move down to unfinished business. Unfinished business requested by Mrs. Gregory. It's my understanding that you would like to speak about the policies that are scheduled to be voted on for tonight.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Scott. For 9-1, 9-2, and 9-3, as our deputy superintendent, Dr. Marshall in Franklin comes to the podium for, well, actually, well, hold on one second, I'm sorry. Yes, I do wish to speak. And these three policies that we have talked about with expediting the hiring process, during discussion about the proposed revisions to the employee approval policies, BDD, CBC, and GCF, a question was raised regarding any legal requirement of the board to approve candidates for hire. While the law does not specify that the board is required to approve all candidates for hire, the language in State Statute 59, 1990, lists employing and discharging teachers as a general power and duty of schools trustees. It does not specifically say the board must approve employees for hire. To further clarify the superintendent's role as it relates to executing the employment of teachers, district administration proposes the language highlighted in green in the draft policies. It reads, "The superintendent will recommend all administrative candidates for approval by the board. The board authorizes the superintendent to execute the preliminary employment of certified teachers on a temporary basis, subject to final approval by the board." The board further authorizes the superintendent to execute the employment of all other candidates on the board's behalf. Additionally, please know that the board will still conduct a formal vote of approval for all employee candidates via the consent agenda. This puts into policy what our previous practice has been and what most South Carolina districts practice as well. And again, our purpose is to expedite the hiring process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. Board members, may I have a motion regarding the proposed revision to Policy BDD, Board Superintendent?
Dr. Scott?
Yes.
I have a question. Did we change the agenda?
No.
So how are we able to skip everything?
What do you mean?
All the way down to 9.1.
You're referring to 8.1?
I was talking about the other items for executive session. I know that we'll have to do, we'll have to put those, are we moving those to the second one, I know that?
Yes.
But did we make that announcement?
And once we get to that point, I will share that.
Okay, I was just curious because we didn't finish it. So do we need to make an announcement that we're going to do those three?
No, that will come down when we talk about second executive session.
Okay.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Who's that? Oh. Like, who's that? Who's that? Mrs. Agostini?
I move that we approve the revisions to Policy BDD, Board Superintendent Relationship, and adopt the policy as revised.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. The motion has been properly moved and seconded, properly moved by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? And there is no discussion, board members, please vote. It's six yes, one no. The motion passes. The motion passes. Mrs. Gregory, policy CBC, superintendent's duties and responsibilities. May I please have a motion regarding the proposed revision to policy CBC, superintendent duties and responsibilities?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
I move that we approve the revisions to policy CBC, superintendent's duties and responsibilities, and adopt the policy as revised.
Is there a second?
A second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Nash, I'm sorry, Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? If not, board members, please vote. Six yes, one no, the motion passes. Nine point three, may I please have a motion regarding the proposed revision to policy GCF, professional staff hiring?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
I move that we approve the revision to policy GCF, professional staff hiring, and adopt the policy as revised.
Is there a second?
A second.
The policy has been properly, the motion has been properly moved by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? No discussion, board members, please vote. Six yes, one no, the motion passes. Nine point four, policy DBJ, budget transfers. May I please have a motion regarding the proposed revision to policy D? Okay. Mrs. Gregory would like to make a comment before we move into the motion for this policy?
Yes, before we move into revision approval, policy DBJ, budget transfers. In a previous discussion about policy DBJ, budget transfers, the board agreed to set the threshold for budget transfers that require board approval to $250,000. While district administration prefers there be no change to the policy, we do not anticipate the $250,000 threshold presenting any highly significant operational barriers. At the February 28th board meeting, the board changed the threshold in the draft policy to 25,000. Unlike the originally proposed threshold, district administration anticipates the $25,000 threshold will present some highly significant operational barriers, including those that may impact the classroom level or even programming. It is my request that the board reconsider's the threshold prior to approving the policy revision tonight. Examples of when there was no disruption to the school day programming because we were able to appropriate funds to address the issue, including a middle school, a pipe failure that resulted in a water line bursting, costing $54,000. A high school where lightning struck the intercom system and cost 78,000. For any of our athletic fields, if any major irrigation leak, field damage occurs, it could cost in the range from $5,000 to $75,000. On Monday, if this happened, the game on Friday might not happen if this is not taken care of. Under special ed or academics, there is a budget for salaries. But if a special needs position goes unfilled due to a vacancy, and the district needs to temporarily outsource the services to get our students through the remainder of the year and deliver services, this would have to go to first the district and then the board level for approval, delaying needed services until such approval can be obtained. IT, funds are budgeted, but if there is a significant cost increase due to inflation or increased costs due to limited inventory, the items could not be purchased at the original budgeted amount.
Thank you, Dr. Scott.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. Board members, you've heard Mrs. Gregory's comment. May I please have a motion regarding the proposed revisions to policy DBJ, budget transfers?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini?
I move to postpone the vote on policy DBJ until the board retreat on March, so that the board can further discuss the policy at the March 23rd board retreat.
You guys have heard Mrs. Agostini's motion. Is there a second?
A second.
The motion has been properly, the motion has been properly moved by Mrs. Agostini, seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Mrs. Nash?
I, I'm just wondering, we had asked for this information in several board meetings back about what kind of examples were given. I think that was in like the first and second revision, for examples, and I think the one we got was a sinkhole, and then we asked the question of how long would it take for us to, would we have time to meet as a board? And that was the only, that was the only example that was given, and we were told that it would take nine months. Of course, we meet well before nine months to fix a sinkhole. So we're, I'm just wondering, you know, where was all this information? Because we've been talking about this policy for a couple of months now. So I'm just really confused.
Okay, any other comments? I see Mrs. Porter.
I believe that was during a presentation, and I feel like, again, I've stated this before, that this kind of information will probably take time for research for our staff and, and to come back with specific situations, and we want accurate information. So I, I agree that to get specific examples and accurate information, that time is needed. And during that time, there was a presentation being given, and the question was asked, and a response was expected on the spot.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash, I'll come back to you. I see that Mrs. Washington is next, and then I'll come back to you. Thank you.
So I'm wondering, with the information that was provided, could we not just go back to the original $250,000 that we had all agreed on before as a board? Including the, some of the revisions of the natural disaster wording, the act of terrorism? Because we all had agreed on $250,000. So is it possible that we can just go back to that threshold of $250,000?
Also, Dr. Franklin reminded me that that information is on slide four, the February 14th presentation that we did, and Dr. Miley is at the podium if you have questions, but a lot of those were about emergency situations, I believe we talked about.
Are there any other questions from board members? Okay, Mrs. Nash?
Again, I understand that, you know, we need specifics, but we did ask, and this was on there before we met here in public session, that we were going to be discussing that policy, and we did ask for specifics that day, and what we got was what was presented. And, you know, no disrespect, it just, you know, I just am confused because the only thing that was presented to us at that time was when the example was asked, even though we've talked about this now for, is this our second or third meeting? So, I mean, it's not really a question, I just, I'm just kind of baffled that now we are, we're hearing the whole list, and we didn't hear the list when we had several, two months, or two, two meetings ago to discuss that.
Are there any other questions from board members before I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. McFadden?
I'm reluctant to, again, postpone something because there's been several things that we have been postponing. We have not yet had a budget meeting, we have not got our audit done, we have not had our meeting to discuss anything. There are a lot of things that we keep postponing that are not being addressed, and I do not want to keep, we had plenty of time to go over this, and every time that we get to the vote, it's like, oh, let's table it again. I understand that we need time to do this, but we need to start focusing on the time that we have and getting it done. We had two readings, it should be done, we should be voting on this tonight and be done with it. We had plenty of time to do it. And I'm saying that, you know, to postpone it to another workshop, we have our workshops loaded with things that we've said we're going to do at workshops. I'm just saying that I think that in the essence of making sure we meet our deadlines and do what we're supposed to do, that we need to be consistent in this. And at the second reading, we need to be taking a vote on it.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden, and I think Mrs. Porter has something to add.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a secondary motion. And that is to approve the edit of, under normal circumstances, transfers between major budget categories cannot exceed 250,000 of the general fund.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
One second, Mrs. Agostini. Allow her to finish.
Her, her secondary motion is not germane to the main motion, so she cannot do that. She can make the motion afterwards, but it has to be amending the main motion.
This is an amendment to the main motion?
No, mine was to postpone. You have to somehow, I made the motion to postpone this. Yours does not pertain to postponing it.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Agostini. And I'm going to make a comment before we take a vote on Mrs. Agostini's motion. Therefore, per motion fails, then we can have the second motion, Mrs. Porter. I'm not going to support Mrs. Agostini's motion. And going back to what Mrs. Nash stated earlier, we've had ample time to have the conversation about the amount of money that we wanted. Not only that, I think we had Dr. Miley up here, and we asked several questions about how much do we normally spend over the last five or 10 years? Has any emergencies occurred where we had to spend a certain amount of money? And he gave us a sinkhole. The information that Mrs. Gregory is now providing to us, I think that information should have been provided much earlier than tonight to just bring on this information to us and to try to quickly force us into a vote at the last minute. Therefore, I will not be supporting Mrs. Agostini's motion. With that being said, board members, I call for the vote. And we'll check to make sure the motion is correct for Mrs. Counsel. Mrs. Agostini, since you're not present, I will go ahead and read your motion. And your motion says, "I move that we postpone the vote until the March 23rd board retreat, when the board can further discuss the policy." You made that motion, it was seconded by Mrs. Porter. Board members, please vote. One yes, six no, the motion fails. May I please have a motion regarding the proposed revision to policy DBJ, budget transfers?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter?
I move to amend the suggested revision to state, under normal circumstances, transfers between major budget categories cannot exceed 250,000 of general, of the general fund without board approval. Under emergency circumstances, transfers up to 250,000 can be made without board approval, and emergency exists when a building where education takes place is rendered unoccupiable by any of the following conditions: natural disaster, act of terrorism, or vandalism, mechanical or structural failure.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter. Is there a second?
A second.
And seconded by Mrs. Nash. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
One second, Mrs. Agostini. Mr. Trapp?
I'm not certain, but I don't think we can make that motion unless we can, we'll need to make a motion to approve the policy, and then we can make secondary motions on that original motion to amend it, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp, but we don't have to do that. She can make that motion, her motion is correct. Mrs. Agostini?
Yeah, and I just wanted to be clear that the motion that was just made was essentially to strike the $25,000 and add or insert $250,000.
Yes, we're clear on the motion.
No, I, I'm, I'm asking if that's what we did, because there was a lot of reading, so I just want to make sure that was the only change. Okay. Yeah, thank you.
You're quite welcome. And we'll wait for Mrs. Counsel to, any more discussion from anyone? Okay, if not, we'll wait for the motion to be posted. And then, once it's posted, Mrs. Porter, if you can check to make sure that's correct. Mrs. Porter, if you would check the motion?
Motion is correct.
Board members, please vote.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And so the rest of that, if I want, I want to be clear, the rest of that...
Mrs. McFadden, we have to do this first, and then I can come back to you.
Is that everything, though? Because there, there's stuff that's missing that is supposed to be included in that?
No.
All in the, everything in the green is included?
Mm-hmm.
Right. Okay.
Mrs. Counsel, are you waiting for? Who are you waiting for?
Yes, because I have a question.
Mrs. McFadden, unfortunately, we've called for the vote.
Because I don't have clarity, I'm going to abstain.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. The motion is five yes, one no, one abstention. The motion passes. The motion passes. Moving to unfinished business, no action requested. 10.1 budget employee survey results. Mrs. Gregory?
Yes. Tonight, we have Dr. Harry Miley, Senior Chief for Finance and Operations, who will provide an update on the 2023-24 budget employee survey results.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for that last vote. I think it will, it will be good for the district. Thank you. I will be brief. This is the employee survey. We've sent it out for several years now. We have had, I wanted to mention that we had had several people on the board and from employees and staff that had said, well, why don't y'all do this next year? Or why don't we do this? And we are going to take suggestions. By the time we had some of those comments from the survey, it was too late to amend how we had structured it, but we will be happy to make changes. We're trying to get information. And any better way that we can do that, we'll be glad to improve that process in any constructive way. With that said, we, since 2021, we don't, we didn't put 2020 data up here, because everybody knows that was a weird year in terms of everything. But in terms of response rate, we dipped a little bit. These are fiscal, these are school years. So I saw 2024, then I'm not sure it's 2024 yet. But these are, these are school years. 2021, right at 40% return rate, response rate. In terms of my experience with surveys, 40% is extremely good. It dipped down to 22, right about 26% back up. And then last, in this current year, it's right at 35%. That's a little bit lower than, than in 2021, but it's still a very strong response rate in terms of typical survey. We ask, what we like to do is try to separate and see who's responding to the survey. And as you can see, for the first one, the vast majority, well, half of the, all respondents are in the classroom. We've got 12% certified instructional and other support certified. So when you add up the 50% of teachers in the classroom, 21% from other certified, that's 71% of the respondents are certified teachers, are support in the schools. So to us, that gives us a real good feeling in terms of what we're getting, the response back from the people in the classrooms and in the schools that we want. Administrators, 6%, instructional support, non-certified, and other support, non-certified, 15%. In terms of the category that they responded to, child development, as you can see, elementary schools are the largest percentage, middle schools and high schools. Again, schools are multiple, multiple school levels. So we've got basically 11% from the district office, a district other than in the schools. So again, we feel like it represents the vast majority of those employees and teachers and certified that are at the schools. As this hasn't, that first line hasn't changed for years. It's no surprise that the number one priority in terms of the budget, again, this is a request in terms of the budget priorities, and employee compensation is always number one. We know that. I think we've addressed that in the budget over multiple years that we've put together. And so I think your emphasis and your priorities from last year in the budget reflect the employee compensation. We always would like to do more, but there always are limits to our ability and our resources. Safety and security is no surprise either. The top five are overwhelmingly higher ranked than the rest of all of them. As you see, the lowest fifth one, the fifth one, student support services, psychologists, social workers, is at 42%, and that's still twice as much as the next higher priority. They're all important. We didn't, none, no one doesn't think these are important, but again, it's to prioritize those and get the response and, and the feelings of our employees and staff. And the last one is, and this is probably one where we get some of our most constructive comments in terms of our asking for what is least important, in your opinion, in the employee's opinion. But these are the ones that we ask that are, well, what do you consider to be the least important? To give us some kind of idea. I think one of the things we may be thinking about next year is, we use this term before, and it's, I think it's strategic abandonment, abandonment, that's an easy word for me to say, but strategic abandonment and in terms of, okay, what are your, what's your opinion of programs, services that we potentially could abandon and reallocate those resources to other things? And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Board members, thank you, Dr. Miley. Board members, any questions or comments? Yes, Mrs. Washington?
Thank you so much for providing this survey responses. I am so glad to see that we are listening to employees' voices. We heard that earlier from an employee. I want to be very clear that we are, we're a wealthy district. We're not, you know, we don't have, it's not that we don't have access. And I know that there are so many initiatives that are coming through from the legislature, and we will be expecting to see things that will impact employee in terms of resources and funding for salaries. I want to definitely suggest that we begin to look at how we're utilizing all of our resources that will impact those top four things that were stated on this survey, such as employee compensation, safety and security, academic intervention, and then student behavior support as well. Those seem to be a top priority, but that's not just a priority that the, the employees are seeing or the teachers are seeing. That's a priority that even our community is asking that we prioritize, because we want to retain top talent, not just our educators, but also our classified staff. I've seen several districts across the, the state that now have begun to develop task force based off of what the state will be funding and also because it is budget season. Is this something that your department is considering so that we can begin to look at how we're going to utilize priorities, what's working and what's not working, and how we're funding various initiatives that right now aren't seen, are appearing to be as important? And also based on data as well?
Our department is involved. We, we try not to, most people don't look at us as experts in terms of policy and hiring and retention. What we do is work with those departments in HR and others, and others in the leadership. And then when we get, okay, here's a plan, how much is this going to cost, and can we afford it? We get more involved. But yes, we're working on those, we've been working on those this week in terms of, okay, what are some of the other districts in the Midlands doing? Everybody has been talking about, well, I'm tired of seeing that billboard with the signing bonus, and where is ours? We hear that loud and clear, and I think we've discussed some potential recommendations. One of the problems we have, I'll be honest, is we need that recommend, we need that bonus now to announce to our potential highries, okay? The ones we want to attract. The problem is, it's not in our current budget that we passed last for July 1 to June 30 of this year. And that's, it still potentially could be done, but we would normally say, oh, well, let's build that into next year's budget in the budget we bring to you for deliberation. The problem with that, that doesn't kick in until July 1, and here we are trying to give out bonuses in March. So we're working on that. We think we have some options that we can recommend, but that's, that's one of the problems. By the time the budget is adopted by you in, in May, it's too late to come out with, oh, come to Richland 2, and here's a signing bonus. So we understand that, and so we're working with, with the administration to try to help us figure something out.
So I want to, just based off of what you just said, is that something that you, that administration, and this is a question for the superintendent, are we going to be very clear in writing these things in the, in the budget so that we, as a board, can approve that? So that we're not waiting until and having to look at where are we going to pull funds from? But is that something that's going to happen prior to?
We'd like to do a combination, actually, and we've been, we'll have those conversations or been trying to have some of those small conversations when we are having the capital improvement, small information meetings about that proposal and what we would like to do.
But we understand from the finance end how important that is, and we're working, trying to work with those that have designed that to figure out how to best pay for it.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes, I have some concerns about the top, in the top five, that there's three of them that I feel like could possibly come from ESER funds. If we were to survey our staff again with giving suggestions for academic intervention for lower achieving students, student behavior support, and student support services of some, some suggestions from our staff, I believe that we would get some items that could be covered from ESER funds, so.
We're open to those suggestions. We, we have included many things like those things in the current plan. And if we need to amend those, the, we have two pots of money still left. The one that runs out, it expires, we have to spend it all by September 30, 2023, six months, seven months. And those funds, we can reallocate, but it takes a, we have to submit an amendment to the state part of education. They have to review it and then respond to us and approve it before it's spent. We have a much, we think we have a much better timeline to reallocate the, the last pot of money, the SO3 funds that expire in September of 2024, and address some of those concerns. We think we will have some funding for that, because just as an example, the SOAR program was, has been very successful, from what I hear. I don't, that's not my expertise, but I understand that it's been very well received and, and very successful. However, this particular summer, this summer, that SOAR program is going to be shorter than previous years because of the new calendar change. It's not something that we designed, I mean, that we wanted, but it's just the fact that the school year is starting earlier this coming summer than it did in past summer. This, this current year is not ending any earlier, so we have a shorter time period. So we'll be spending bottom on, we'll be spending less money on SOAR this summer than we did last summer. And so that may free up some funds that we can reallocate to other needs.
Okay, Mrs. Porter, let me see. Mrs. McFadden, and then I'll come back to you, Mrs. Porter.
Dr. Miley, last year, we got a list of other priorities. So we get the first, the first list, and it's the things that are mandated, contractual, and things that we'd like to do. And then we get, we're provided a list with the rest of the money that we could play with.
We're not talking about the survey. We're, you're talking about the budget.
Right, because with the survey, these things that, that the employee compensation, safety and things, those would come into play in these additional requests when we get the new budget, right?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, because they're factored in, into all of our recommendations. I mean, yes, ma'am.
So what I was wondering was, with this information from the employees and what you're getting from the board, we're starting the budget process. And so I'm curious, you know, how are we going to take these and put these into the additional requests that we want for administration? Because you said there's some programs that we don't need anymore, or that are, I guess you would say, people don't really care too much for, that we could possibly get rid of or find another way to do it? So my concern is taking this information, and from what the board wants, and putting it into the additional requests that are coming through for the budget. So that's the purpose of this?
Yes. Well, and, and those requests for additional things will come from departments whose department is responsible for social workers and psychologists. The departments that are involved in behavioral interventionists will be putting via their budget requests. And as we see in this priority, those are really high priority in terms of the district employees. And so those requests from those departments will be, will be coming to the budget discussion.
Okay, so is there a way that the board can get the, the full list? I mean, I know it's going to be difficult, but we usually get what's already watered down and what's already been chosen. So there's usually like 20 lists, 20 things that we get. But like Dr. said, Scott said last year, we want to know what other priorities there were in the beginning so that we, as a board, can go through and say, well, let's prioritize these a little differently, so that we can see that full list of what some departments, because some departments don't get any of their information on this final list that we get.
And we will be glad to do that.
Yes, sir.
Frequently, we have, and if you could excuse me, I wasn't sure I'd be talking this much. Can I get my bottle of water real quick? In the past, what we've done is, when we put together those requests, demands, I'm an old economist, I look at the demand side and the supply side. The demand side are all the requests from all the departments represented here, all the schools, all the needs we have. Some are not our choice. Some of the mandates from the state are required, and we don't really have any discretion. They're just required, we are required by law to give this amount of, of race. This amount has to go to insurance. There's state laws in their budget. But we frequently get lots of requests and needs and demand side from all the departments, the schools. And we have, for instance, I think last year, we had about $16 million of new money, if I remember right, but I've, there's much, many, many years all mushed together, but about $16 million. And I think we had about $30 million of requests. I can't remember exactly, but that's a pretty good representative example of the years that we've been, that I've been here, that we've had, 14, 15 million dollars, and we've had 25 or 30 million dollars worth of requests, all needed, all important. And we have to figure out how to cut that $30 million down to whatever supply we have of revenues. And that's, that's a difficult process, because they're all important, and all the departments need them. So that priority will, will be, I will, we will share that full list, because the, one of the challenges we have, and again, back to that $16 million of new money like last year, I think at the end, there was about $4 million that was discretionary, that is, that was not required by the state to spend. So yes, we look at it, oh, we had $16 million, but 12 of it was required by the state, and that left us $4 million of what we, the board, has discretion of saying, yes, that's a priority, let's fund that. No, that's not a priority. And so that's, that's a very difficult thing to do when you've got 20, 25 million dollars on the list of, of needs. So, but, but we will be more than happy to share that full list, because it does represent our, our experts in their departments of what they need on the ground to do their jobs.
Board members, any other questions? Mrs. Porter?
I'm sorry, I'm going back to those ESER funds again. I know you mentioned the second pot of money. I just wanted to put it out there that sending that survey of questions to our staff sooner than later, perhaps this time of year, even though we're talking about that second pot for next year, may be important, because if they're feeling like they're being heard, that's also a way that we retain teachers.
Doing this earlier in the year, basically.
Right, and also waiting until August and September, when it's the beginning of the school year, so much is going on, and those surveys may not be given the same amount of time as this time of year, so.
Mrs. Agostini, do you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay. The only question that I have, and more so a comment, when I look at the employee budget survey responses, these are the same questions that we receive as board members. And I think the only suggestion that I would like to see is, on the question, question four, it stated, the following have been identified as areas of priority in Richland School District 2. Please identify five, in no particular order, you believe are least important. The only concern that I had with this is, you guys didn't give us an option. What if we only had two? It did not allow us to do less than five, and I would love to see, maybe in the next survey, that you give us an option and maybe say something up to five if you choose to. But it was almost like it forced us to choose items that we really did not want to choose. So I'm not sure how accurate question number four would be for employees as well as for school board members, because it forced you to choose something that you may not even want to choose. So I would just make that suggestion.
That makes very good sense. I like that. Well, we will pass that on to the president.
Okay.
I did want to ask a question.
Okay, Mr. Trapp?
I just want to make sure I'm looking at this right. It would appear that employees have very little interest in things like football, track, I mean, am I looking at that right?
I'm not going to say that, but.
Well, I mean, I just want to make sure these categories are what I think.
It is, it is, it is, it is ranked lower than the other categories. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Miley.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving to item 11.1, new business action requested. We will now move to new business action, action requested, where there are two agenda items. 11.1, standing committee approval, finance committee. In accordance with policy BDE, board committees, standing committees may be established with board approval. The chair desires to establish a finance committee as a standing committee. May I please have a motion regarding the formation of a finance committee as a standing committee? Madam Chair? Yes, Mrs. Nash?
I move that we approve the formation of the finance committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been properly moved by Mrs. Na, Nash, and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? No discussion. Board members, please vote. We can take a hand vote if you're not signed in. Ms. Porter, if you could give us a hand vote. Mrs. Nash, is the motion correct?
That is correct.
Yes. Seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. 11.2, approval of submission to the state auditor, district procurement code. We will now move to item 11.2, approval of submission of the district procurement code to the state auditor. Mrs. Gregory?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Scott. I'm going to ask Mrs. Lwana Robinson Lee, who's our Director of Procurement and Contractive Services, to come to the podium, and she's joined again by Dr. Miley. And note that this says approval of submission to the state auditor. So we're asking for approval of the submission. It goes to the auditor who approves it, and then it comes back to you, or will come back to you for adoption.
Do I have that right, Dr. Miley?
Yes, correct. Thank you. And I'll spare y'all, y'all don't have to listen to me anymore, but I would, wanted to introduce our procurement director, Mrs. Lwana Robinson Lee. She is a resident of Richland County, Richland 2, has Vegas, child in the district. Yes. And has been leading our procurement office since she joined us last August, and has put together, as you will see, an excellent presentation on the procurement code that we hope to be adopting by, implementing by July 1. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lwana. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Miley.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, madam superintendents. I'm going to talk to you briefly tonight about our Richland 2 school district code. All right, so Richland School District 2 is subject to the South Carolina Consolidated Procurement Code due to our operating expenditures exceeding $75 million. So with that, our procurement code has to be substantially similar to the state of South Carolina. In 2021, the Division of Procurement Services created a South Carolina model school district code that was to be used for school districts. And this code comes from South Carolina law, Title 11, Public Finance, and Chapter 35, which is the South Carolina Consolidated Procurement Code. In order for our code to be substantially similar to the state of South Carolina, we were only allowed to make edits. And those edits, out of 107 pages, we only did 10 edits. And those edits were, we added Richland School District 2, were indicated, we added board of trustees, were indicated, and there was a section in there about a procurement review panel, and the drafting notes allowed us to strike through and delete that section, those comments. Now, in the count of the edits, is not counting in that document where we struck through the drafting notes or the alternative language, okay? This is a summary of the significant changes in the code as it relates to the current procurement code that we have. The first one is, we have a higher, we'll have a higher acquisition threshold for small purchases, architect and engineering services, minor construction. There's something that's called commercially available off-the-shelf purchases, resident vendor preferences for local, state, and U.S. products and goods and services, sole source and emergency procurements being advertised if they're greater than 50,000, how we handle our protest procedures, and indefinite, indefinite, indefinite quantity contracts and task order contracts. So our current thresholds are listed on the left. Anything that's under $2,500, we really only need one quote, and we can proceed. The new threshold as it relates to the state is $10,000 for one quote, and we can proceed. Anything that's over 50,000, I'm sorry, $10,000 to $50,000, we do something that, we advertise in South Carolina business opportunities, which is, we call it SKEBO. That's a advertising unit that's used by all state agencies. And so essentially, anything that's $10,000 and above, we advertise in SKEBO. New state threshold, anything that's $25,000 and above, it's advertising in SKEBO, okay? Commercially available off-the-shelf items essentially is, we can, we can purchase items that we would buy in a retail store up to $100,000. But in order to do that, we will have to follow our small purchase procedures, okay? And some examples of, we call it COTS, some examples of that are clothing, promotional items. Again, like if you walk into Walmart, anything you see in Walmart is commercially available. What we cannot purchase off COTS are information technology, printing, insurance, petroleum, agriculture, or anything that's listed on the state contract. We have our vendor preferences. We have to, vendors will have to identify that upfront when we put out a solicitation. So we have our resident vendor preference for Richland County. We have our state preference, and we have a United States preference. These preferences, and we have for the, on the good side, and then we have preferences for service contracts. And those are the same preferences. If you are Richland County, you get a percentage, and then if you are subcontractor under the main contractor, you can get a stackable preference on that as well. Again, the preferences must be requested at the time of bid submission. They have to provide us proof of their preference. And again, they can be combined and capped at 10%. So we're not going to, it's the 10% when we're determining the preference on a project. So in this particular example, we had four vendors to submit, and they all submitted $100,000 for their bid. Vendor B claimed a resident vendor preference. So we go back in and calculate that $100,000, multiply it by the 7%, remove that 7,000, and their new bid is 93,000. So we would then award the contract to vendor B at the amount of $100,000. So we only use the percentage as a way to calculate the low bid, okay? Sole sources and emergency procurements. Currently, we do not advertise our sole sources and emergencies in SKEBO, but with the new code, we will have to, any sole source or emergency that we have, an emergency procurement that exceeds $50,000 will have to be advertised in SKEBO. So anything that's 50,000 up to 250,000, we advertise it, it's going to have to, I'm sorry, 50,000 to 250,000 will have to be advertised in SKEBO for five days. Anything beyond $250,000 will have to be advertised in SKEBO for 10 days. And during that time, a vendor could come in and protest and say, hey, this is not a sole source, I can provide that good or service, and at that time, we would take a different direction. Emergencies, we still have to advertise, we would have to advertise our emergencies that exceed $50,000 to the state of South Carolina in SKEBO. They are still protestable, but a proven an emergency will not, we're not going to delay a true emergency. We just have to advertise in SKEBO once we're done. Okay, protest of an award. So when we issue a contract, if the contract currently is between 50 and $100,000, we issue a statement of award. That statement of award has protest language in it, but we can immediately award that contract. Anything that's above $100,000, we have to issue something that's called an intent-to-award. And that intent-to-award has to be out there for 10 days to give our bidders time to file a protest or state if they're aggrieved about the award. The new protest period is now, if it's 50,000 or greater, you have seven business days to send me an email or put in writing that you intend to protest the award. You then have 15 days from the date of the posting, 15 calendar days from the date of the posting to tell me why you're, you're aggrieved and you want to protest. If you don't give me any information after that 15th day, we move forward with the contract. Indefinite quantity contracts and task order contracts, previously, they were all officially known as IDCs. The state has separated that. So anything that's a professional service, which would be our architects, engineer, and land surveying services, we will issue indefinite, indefinite quantity contract. And anything that's construction-related, we will issue task order contracts. And the different contracts have different contract terms. So for IDQ, for an indefinite quantity contract, those are two years. And then for a task order contract, those contracts are five years. So our next step, so tonight, we will be requesting that you allow us to send that edited consolidate, 2021 model consolidated procurement code to the state auditor for his review and approval. And then, once he approves it, we intend to bring it back to you all for adoption along with the exemptions. And we're anticipating that we can bring it back to you all in May. And we plan to implement the new consolidated procurement code July 1. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Robinson and Dr. Miley. Board members, are there any questions? Mrs. McFadden?
Dr. Gregory, I would just like to say thank you for telling us that we have a little bit more time to read that, because I called to Mika over the weekend, said there's no way I'm going to be able to finish reading that whole procurement code by the time the board meeting is. So that, thank you for breaking this down, and thank you for letting us know that we have more time to go over it. So I guess when we get it back, will you all have highlighted the areas for us that have been changed from what we currently have so that we'll know where to look at for those changes, or?
So in, I believe it was Friday, two Fridays ago, we sent the code that we edited, and it is in color. So we struck through what we struck through, and that's what we're going to, that's what I'm requesting to be sent for your all approval this evening, to send to the state. So if you're asking for a comparison of what we have in our current code versus what's in the new code, it's kind of in the synopsis that I gave here.
Right, yes, ma'am. So the one that we have, we don't have, I mean, I have, I can see where some things have been changed, but we don't have the color-coded one where it shows what was changed. So I was wondering if we can get that one, and then whatever they, they changed, would you bring back to us for approval, that we can see what they've changed as well, or what you've changed after, before we get the final one and we vote on it, that way we can see the whole document?
Okay, so when, right now, I apologize if you didn't get the color-coded document, but what they will do, if you all approve to send it to the state tonight, they will review it and approve it, and after they approve it, we are not allowed to make any changes to it.
Oh, so what you're sending, what we're sending tonight will basically be what it is?
Yes, ma'am.
So if we haven't read through that, we don't know what it says. So what you're sending, okay, so that means right now, we're going to put complete faith and trust that what's in this document is good to go.
Absolutely.
We trust it, we trust it. I couldn't have said that any better. But remember, remember that the code, one is if they make, if the state says we don't agree with an edit we've recommended, we would make that change. But remember, this is the, the code that we're required to adopt.
Right.
So I mean, we don't have a whole lot of flexibility recommending to the state auditor and editing this state code that's in law. So that's one of the things, and when, when Lwana was saying that we made very few edits, we don't, we don't have a lot of wiggle room
Okay.
to tell the state that we don't agree with their code.
Correct, because our code has to be substantially similar to the state. And if you ask the state auditor to give you a synopsis of that, he says, change where it says school name to Richland School District 2.
Right.
And if you have board of trustees, you indicate so, and that is it.
Okay.
That's all the changes that we really essentially were allowed to make in that document.
Okay.
I will make a comment if we don't have any other questions. Any other questions? You do have a question, Mr. Trapp? Mrs. Agostini, right after Mr. Trapp, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm on page 10, and I just want to make sure I know what I'm looking at here. So any, on sole source and emergency, what constitutes an emergency in those conditions?
An emergency is anything that is a threat to public safety and welfare, welfare. That would be considered an emergency.
Okay.
So in the instance with the sinkhole, or we come in and a school is flooded, that's an emergency.
Right, okay. On sole source, earlier, earlier, there was a purchasing clause in there. Is sole source something other than purchases? Is that for services rather than, or what would, what are we talking about?
So what that was earlier, I believe you were referring, I think you were referring to the COTS?
I think so, yeah.
Are you referring to commercially, so that's different than the sole source. So commercially available off-the-shelf item is, we can go into a Walmart and buy, you know, T-shirts, up to $100,000, but we'd have to follow certain procedures to be able to do that. Now, a sole source is when there's actually one vendor or provider that can provide a good or service.
Okay, okay. So my, my question then, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm looking at this right. SKEBO has to be advertised for five days on SKEBO if it's over $50,000. I mean, is there any exceptions to that?
No, sir.
So, and the reason to bring this up is earlier, we had an example of, say, a sinkhole at a, at a football field. If we had a sinkhole on Monday, and we determined that we wanted to do something with that as quick as possible, and the contractor came in and said it'd be $52,000, we couldn't touch it until we advertised on SKEBO for a week. Is that, am I looking at it right?
So if we consider that sinkhole an emergency procurement, then we would move forward, but we would have to attain as much competition as practical
Okay.
before we move forward with it. So once we award that contract to that vendor, we would then turn around and advertise in SKEBO, once they, we've awarded a contract for sinkhole repairs to company B in the amount of $52,000.
Okay, but we would have to justify that as an emergency if we wanted to get that quicker.
Absolutely. There's a form that we complete for emergency procurements.
Okay.
Mrs. Agostini?
Thank you, Dr. Scott, and thank you so much for this presentation. It's been very informative. I just want to be clear on the preference application example, and I think you said it, but I want to make sure I heard it correctly. So when you're looking at, it's page number nine, the vendor B, they get the 7% reduction, but they're actually paying $100,000. Am I?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Board members, any other questions? No questions, just a comment. I read this. So for the record, I read this. No comments or questions? May I have a motion regarding the submission of the district procurement code to the state auditor? Madam Chair? Yes, Mrs. Washington. I move that we direct district administration to submit the procurement code to the state auditor. Is there a second? A second. It's been properly moved by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Are there any questions? Discussion?
Thank you very much.
Seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. Item 12.1, school, well, proposal 2024-2025 school year calendar. The first agenda item in this section is a proposed calendar for school year 2024-2025. Mrs. Gregory?
Yes, thank you. We have Dr. Franklin, and she has a member of the committee, our deputy superintendent, Dr. Franklin, and representation from the committee to share the proposal for the 2024-25 school year. Hard to believe we're looking Hard to believe we're looking at 24-25.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. Madam Vice Chairman, members of the board, the calendar committee consisted of student, parent, and employee representatives. Joining me in the presentation tonight is Ms. Octavia Sims, one of our classified representatives. Ms. Sims is an office professional at Kelly Mill Middle School. We also have in the audience, I believe, two other calendar committee members, if you would stand, Mr. Smith, who is a middle and high school parent. And Ms. Bailey was here. Ms. Bailey is one of our elementary school teachers, is probably approaching her bedtime, so she left, but she was with us here tonight. Thank you, Mrs. Smith, for hanging in there with us.
As ex-facile member of the committee, Dr. Coleman and Dr. Franklin guided the process, but had no decision-making power. What is being shared with you tonight is indeed the work of the calendar committee. To get the calendar development process underway, committee members were tasked to create draft calendars based on specific criteria.
And so what you see on the screen are guidelines that committee members were given. These are elements that must be included in a calendar. And please note that the last element on the list, where it says the first day of school for students is on or after the third Monday in August, that has been a requirement specified in state statutes since 2007. But also note that that same statute allows for calendars that deviate from that requirement when creating a modified calendar. Also, in board policy IC, where it mentions the third Monday rule, that does not apply to schools who are using a modified calendar. So if the board approves a modified calendar, the third Monday rule does not apply. The next category you see are recommendations. So these are elements that have historically been a part of the district's calendars. And the last category would be considerations. These are elements that are just nice to have. And so this committee created 13 draft calendars. And so those calendars were submitted to district administration. Dr. Coleman and I went through all of them just to ensure that they all met the requirements by state law. There were other 13 calendars. Eight of them were traditional calendars, and five of them were modified calendars. The required guidelines was found to be in place in all of those calendars, and the committee then met and used a scoring process to narrow the pool of calendars from 13 to 7.
Based on the feedback provided by the partner groups, the calendar committee made a few adjustments and chose two calendars to move forward in the process. Both of those calendars were modified calendars. During the week of February 21st, parents and employees had the opportunity to vote for the calendar of their choice.
And so we'll share with you the outcome of the voting. First of all, the participation in the voting. So you see on the screen the number of employees, parents, and then those individuals who are parents and employees who participated and what that percentage is. The percentages listed represent the responders who fall into the designated group. So for example, of the 5,494 responders, 55% of them were parents. So that's what the percentages represent. In addition to our target participation rate for surveys is 20%. The calendar survey marginally exceeded that target by being at 23.5%. That's definitely something the committee will work on for next year because that was significantly lower than participation we had the previous year where it was 33%. So that's a target for the, for next year's committee. Here we have the outcome of the voting. There were two calendar options, option A and option B. The most significant difference between those two calendars was that calendar A had a long weekend in the fall as a fall break, and calendar B had a week-long Thanksgiving break. That really was the major difference between the two calendars. And so here you see the outcome of voting overall, as well as the outcome by group. And while calendar B is the preferred calendar based on the votes, by about 206 votes, in full transparency, I do want to bring to your attention that it is not the preferred choice of people in the employee group. And so it is customary that the district administration proposes just one calendar to the board for consideration. Based on the outcome of the calendar development process, it is the recommendation of district administration that the board approves the calendar that received the highest number of votes, which is calendar B. Ms. Sims will tell you about calendar B, as that is the calendar she created for the district calendar committee.
My calendar, this calendar included six workdays at the beginning of the school year. In previous years, the calendar had five workdays at the beginning of the year. The first day of school for students is midweek on a Wednesday. The least preferred day to start the school year is a Monday. There is a week-long Thanksgiving break. Typically, our Thanksgiving break is three days. The first semester ends before winter break. There is a workday before students return from winter break. This allows time for teachers to do planning interchange over from first semester to the second semester. And the end of the year workday is on a weekday, not a Saturday.
All right, Madam Vice Chair, that concludes the report of the district calendar committee.
And Ms. Sims? And Mr. Smith, good to see you as well. Are there board members, any questions or comments? Madam Chair? Mrs. Nash?
I just wanna say great job on the calendar.
Thank you.
And I feel like our presenter earlier, when she said, using your voice, "Good job, guys." You ain't our last presenter.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. McFadden?
I would just like to say, I really like this calendar. I appreciate your hard work that you put in there and advocating for that full week of Thanksgiving. It's great because, you know, if you travel out of state, you know, having just those couple of days, extra days is really good, so thank you guys for that. And I noticed that school does start earlier in the month of August, so, I mean, that's okay. But I think everything else is really, really good, and I like the fact that the semester ends before winter break. That's really good because you can clear everything out, kids, and then switch over for the new semester. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Any other questions, board members? Well, please note that the 2024-25 calendar is scheduled to be voted on at the March 28th board meeting. Moving to 12.2, 12. through 12.5, policy revisions. Mrs. Gregory?
Dr. Franklin is gonna stay up for a little while at the podium. These, the next policies are some of the model policies that we received from the School Board Association, starting with the revision proposal for IMDA patriotic exercises.
Ms. Sims, you're welcome to help me do policies if you would like. The policies presented tonight come as a result, as Ms. Gregory said, of action taken by the General Assembly during the 2022 legislative session. These are policies that are, or they're laws that go into effect next school year. The first three policies on tonight's agenda are all related to new legal requirements that are aimed to increase patriotic awareness and civic involvement. So two existing laws were amended, which required the following. Number one, the United States and South Carolina models and flags be displayed in schools in a prominent place by January 1, 2023. And number two, that patriotism week, the week of November 11, be observed in schools. And then there was one law that was passed requiring schools to allow representatives of youth patriotic societies the opportunity to speak with students during the week of Patriot Day, which is September 11. A youth patriotic society is a youth membership organization with an educational purpose aligned with state academic standards intended to promote patriotism and kindred virtues among students, specifically big brothers, big sisters, boy scouts, girl scouts, boys and girls clubs, and future farmers of America. Other youth patriotic societies may be added to the list upon approval by the State Board of Education. Policy IMDA, patriotic exercises, is a proposed new policy that lists all of the required patriotic observances. With the exception of the text that is underlined and highlighted in yellow, the contents of the policy proposal are that of the School Board Association's model policy. District administration recommends that the board includes directions for observing Patriot Day when September 11 falls on a weekend day or holiday, and that's reflected in the yellow highlighted text. This is an existing policy, IMDB. This is an existing policy that already addresses flag displays. The text that is underlined reflects the amended law requiring the United States and state models to also be displayed in schools. And this has already taken place. Our communications department developed a poster that schools have framed and placed on the walls in the school. And the last policy related to patriotism is policy IHAC, social studies education. It is recommended that the sections on Constitution and Citizenship Day and Veterans Day be deleted because that information will now be in IMDA if it's adopted. So those topics are addressed in the new, the newly proposed policy. Madam Vice Chair, I'll pause there because all three of those policies are related and have similar content, and so I'll pause there for questions.
Board members, any questions or comments? Madam Chair? Yes, Mrs. Washington?
I'd like to postpone the discussion of these items, including the proposal of GLCE for encumbered time until our board retreat on March 21st. I know that these are state mandates for these policies. They're not due until August. I feel like we have some other priorities to address this evening.
A motion has been made, is there a second?
A second.
The motion has been made to postpone these policies 12.1 to 12, I'm sorry, 12.2 to 12.5, and to the board retreat on March 28th? Is that correct? 21st. Now, I'm hearing two dates, 23rd, 21st, until March 23rd?
The board, it's the 23rd.
Okay, on March 23rd. Is there any discussion?
I'm sorry, may I make one comment, Madam Vice Chair, before you adjut the voting? Now, the three policies that relate to patriotism, those are policies that go into effect next year. So we have some time on those. The unencumbered time policy does have a time limit. I believe it's the beginning of April, mid-April, that it has to be approved. Yeah, so it has to be approved, we got it in January, and it has to be approved within 90 days.
And I'm going to make a comment. I'm going to not support postponing these policies only because they're state mandated policies. So it's not a whole lot we can do. If any, there's nothing we can do with it. We have to abide by the law. So I'm going to just not be able to support this, and let's just go ahead and vote on it and then be done with it. But that's my opinion. Mrs. Agostini?
And I wanna say that I concur with Dr. Scott. These are pretty basic, that are standard, and I think we can better use our time at our board retreat discussing and having good discussions on policies where the board really wants to change them and can change policy. Thank you.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and properly seconded. Board members, I'll wait until the motion is up. It's not a voted item, yes, no act, thank you for that. Right, we'll take a hand vote if you're supporting moving these policies to the board.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair? You had said 12.2 to 12.5, so can we change that to 12.2 to 12.4? Because she said that we would need to have 12.5 done in a particular timeframe.
Well, that's Mrs. Washington's motion. Your motion was for which one, Mrs. Washington?
I listed all of them, but due to the timeframe, we, what is the, what is the, what is the process for, I guess, pulling the motion back? Do we, do I just rescind it?
Yes, you can just.
Okay, well, I will just rescind that, and we can move forward. Can I please make a comment that when we know that we have these policies that are due, that we do them? Budget season is a, it's a busy time. And so if we can please make sure that we get these things ahead of the schedule, we've known that these things were due, those particular due dates since last year for the three, for the patriotic, the flag, and the social studies. And so if we can get these things ahead of time so that we're not doing these during busy seasons for school board meetings, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Any other comments? Thank you, Dr. Franklin. We're gonna move to item 13, 13.1.
Madam Vice Chair, can we do 12.5?
My apologies, I'm just rushing the meeting. Okay, thank you, 12.5, thank you.
Okay, so policy GCLE again is another legislative requirement that comes out of the previous legislative session that will go into effect in the next school year. And the way this policy has worked is in jet, school districts had to wait on the State Board of Education to develop, to develop their model. And when that model became available in January and was given to districts, districts started working on it then. However, prior to that, since the beginning of this school year, we've had several of our schools that have piloted some solutions to unencumbered time. And so I'll share some of that with you today as well. So policy GCLE, unencumbered time, represents the dream of every elementary school teacher. To give some context, at the middle and high school level, teachers are scheduled for two planning periods per day. Know that I said "scheduled for" as it doesn't include days when a teacher may have a required meeting during a planning period or when a teacher may be covering the class of an absent teacher during a planning period. The two scheduled planning periods at middle and high school are made possible because of the nature of scheduling at the secondary level in general and the abundance of elective classes as well. At the elementary level, however, teachers generally have very little unencumbered time. That is, time when they're not with students as there are only three required elective classes, which we refer to as related arts, art, music, and PE. Additionally, elementary students require a greater degree of supervision than do secondary students, and teachers escort them everywhere, to the classroom in the morning, to the bus in the afternoon, to lunch, where teachers sit with students while they eat lunch, and then escort them back to class and perhaps to recess, where teachers then supervise them as they play. And when recess is over, the teachers escort them back to the classroom. And even on days when an elementary teacher has a 45 or 50-minute planning period, by the time the teacher takes the students to related arts, uses the restroom, checks their mailbox, inbox, he or she has about 15 minutes left before it's time to go pick the students back up again and bring them back to class. So in the 2022 legislative session, the General Assembly passed legislation that requires elementary teachers and sped teachers at the secondary level to receive at least 30 minutes of unencumbered time each regular school day. On this topic of unencumbered time, there is a State Board of Education model policy, a School Boards Association model policy, and the law itself. District administration laid all three of these documents, and the draft presented to you tonight is a blend of the three using the School Board Association's model as the base. It was our goal to make the language in the policy mirror the language in the law and to ensure the language in the policy is as clear as possible. So that's the what of the policy. I'll pause there before I get to the how. If there are any questions, just about the what the policy consists of?
Comments? Okay, you can continue.
Okay, so that was the good news. Beginning next school year, elementary teachers will receive the 30 minutes of unencumbered time on each regular school day. The not-so-good news is that the legislative mandate does not come with any funding attached to make it happen. Throughout the school year, we have piloted a variety of ways to meet this requirement with existing staff. For example, some of our schools have had non-homeroom certified teachers provide lunch supervision, which frees up the homeroom teacher to have unencumbered time. We have had related arts teachers, in some instances, serve as LEAs for IEP meetings so that the homeroom teachers could have planning. We've also had instances where the admin team is supervising grade levels at recess so that the teachers can have unencumbered time. Now, while these methods are doable, they're not sustainable and in some cases present some risks. So for example, if the whole admin team is on the playground supervising students so that teachers can get their unencumbered time, it leaves the rest of the school without administrative coverage. And so if there is an emergency or if there is a significant need, then one of the administrators would have to leave the playground to go attend to the need, which then leaves the playground without adequate supervision. So during the budgeting process, district administration plans to request one additional classified FTE for each elementary school and a .5 classified FTE for each elementary center to assist schools with meeting the unencumbered time requirement. Madam Vice Chair, that concludes the presentation of GCLE, unencumbered time.
Thank you, Dr. Franklin. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Thank you for that, and I do, Ms. McFadden, you have a question?
So you're saying five more certified positions for each school?
No, one additional classified FTE for each traditional elementary school and a .5 additional FTE for our elementary. a .5 additional FTE for our elementary centers.
So they're just basically going to be covering shifts?
Correct, so it would be the principal discretion, how that person is used, but it gives them at least one additional staff member to help with providing unencumbered time for teachers.
Mrs. Agostini, do you have any questions or comments?
No, just thank you so much, Dr. Franklin, for your thorough presentations on the policies.
Yes, and again, Dr. Franklin, thank you for that, and I too agree that with that additional FTE for classified, as well as the .5, that would be great. I know a lot of other school districts, that's what they do as well, so thank you so much for that. We're going to move to 13.1, draft agenda items for March 28, 2023. Mrs. Gregory?
All right. For Tuesday, March 28, for our regular board meeting and executive session, we will be in receipt of legal advice regarding the dual class action litigation and regarding the social media class action litigation. Our student admission request into the district's adult ed program, appeals, contracts, and releases. Our inspirational moment, pledge of allegiance, I believe, Dr. Scott, you have that for the meeting, approval of the agenda, and our consent agenda, again, where we will have employment releases and district transfers, ratification of personnel, capital improvements, and we have academic waivers, which are required with our strategic plan. Our first public session, participation session, and then we'll vote on the executive session items. For unfinished business, action requested, we have the 2024-25 school calendar. Believe we've moved the policies we have listed, the three policies we discussed tonight to the March 23 retreat, and then we'll carry over the GLCE unencumbered time. On unfinished business?
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes, ma'am?
Those policies were not approved, so they would not carry over to the March 23. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. All right. Mr. Tarketa will lead us with the legislative update, and Mr. Anderson with safety and security will give us an update on Cintijic, our crisis alert badges. Under new business, no action requested, we have a second quarter financial report from Dr. Miley, the auditor's report, and we have listed a discussion of employee bonuses. And then we'll go over the draft agenda for the April 4 meeting, second public participation if needed, board comments, and so forth, and then adjournment.
Madam Chair? Did you say that we weren't be going over the policies under eight?
We are, I think, I am correctly said in the board retreat, and Dr. Scott corrected.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
That was my error.
No problem. Board members, anything you'd like to add to the future agenda? Okay, moving to 14.1, public participation. There are no additional speakers scheduled for public participation, so we will move on to the next agenda item, board and superintendent comments. We'll start with Mr. Trapp.
I don't have any comments tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter?
Yes, can you come back to me?
Absolutely. Mrs. McFadden?
I don't have any comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Washington? Thank you to everyone who attended tonight. Have a great evening, and we adjourn. Mrs. Porter?
Yes, I just wanted to recognize Mrs. Gail Ross and Summit Parkway Middle School with them winning the 12 first-place awards with their FBLA group and the two second-place awards. So I know we got that via email, and I just wanted to recognize them.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. Mrs. Nash?
Well, I wanted to say thank you to everybody online that's watching, everybody in the room, always, our tech people, and all the things that you guys do to make this happen. To our presenter tonight, talking about finding your voice, thank you so much. That was, you guys were great. And then to all of our certified teachers tonight, thank you to the teacher who spoke up. I don't want to butcher your last name, but thank, what is it? Seisloth, okay. Lane, I got the first name, I have a friend named Lane, but thank you so much for speaking up. We'd love to hear from more teachers, and hopefully we can make it happen with our board workshop that we talk about, a teacher forum. So thank you for all of that, and I think that about covers it for me. I hope you guys have a great night.
Mrs. Agostini?
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Yes, I wanted to thank Bella and her mom, too, for providing the inspirational moment and for Bella using her voice. And also a big congratulations and thank you to all the teachers that were recognized tonight with their national board certification. Thanks.
Mrs. Gregory?
Thank you, Dr. Scott. I attended, as did Mr. Trapp and a group of staff members, the town hall meeting about the scout plan on Monday night. We're excited to be a partner in this effort to bring the electric vehicle plant to reality. 4,000 employees means a huge economic impact, as well as impact on our schools. We look forward to further conversations on how we can support this effort. Speaking of Blithwood, our Richland Two students were stars this morning at the Blithwood Chamber Meeting. Business leaders learned about our project Search and Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy efforts starring students from Ridgeview and Westwood High Schools, as well as the R2 Project Search creator, Stephen Cross. Richland Two also has some awards to celebrate. We have the Region Four Magnet Schools of America Magnet Principal of the Year, Tamela Ashford from Dent, and the Teacher of the Year, Emily Everlin from Muller Road Middle School. They are representing Region Four, and I didn't know that Region Four represents actually seven states, and two of them won both awards and now will compete for the national. Jamie George at Bethel Hambury is this year's recipient of the APEC Center's Professional Commitment Award. This award is given each year to a fellow who demonstrates outstanding commitment to professional growth and development. We're so proud of Jamie. Deja Walker at Bookman Road and Kimberly Dawn Stoner, excuse me, at CFI are both receiving the APEC Fellow of the Year awards. This award is given to fellows who demonstrate excellence in the field and in their courses. And in case you don't remember what APEC is, it's Columbia College's Alternative Pathways to Education Certification Program. It was the state's first registered apprenticeship program for teachers, and this program that we participate in, Richland Two, lets employees and districts acquire their teaching certification while working full-time. And finally, I had the privilege of throwing out the first pitch Friday night at the girls' softball game at Blithwood High School, and I am proud to say I made it over the plate. So I was very excited. So thank you, Blithwood High, for having me out Friday night.
And I would just like to say thank you to all the people who presented this evening. I know Mr. Smith got out, and I want to tease him because many, many years ago, he was over the chess club at North Springs, and I was just wondering if he still does that because I thought I was a chess champion. I really wasn't, but he made me feel that way. So I wanted to talk with him about that. And most definitely want to say thank you to Kim Lee Cersei and Bella for sharing your voice with us tonight. Bella, I look forward to purchasing one of your books. And thank you to everyone that's here this evening. 16.1, executive session continued. May I have a motion to recess public session and reconvene into executive session?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move to adjourn to executive session two.
Is there a second? Second. The motion have been properly moved by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? If there are no discussion, board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes, and the board will reconvene in executive session. Point four, resume public session. May I have a motion to end executive session?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Trapp?
I move that executive session ended at 10:17 and that we reconvene in regular session.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion have been properly moved by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Board members, please vote. I will have to do a hand vote, Mrs. Counsel. No. She's not on. Yes. The motion is six yes, no, should be five. One, two, three, four.
Six yes and one abstain.
Okay, six yes and one extension. Well, she's not here, so not present. Mrs. Agostini is not present. So the motion passes. And there is no student appeals or, as needed, to vote on items for executive session number two. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting for March 24.
Is there a second?
Of March 14.
Second.
The motion has been properly moved by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mr. Trapp. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. Hand vote. The vote is six yes. Mrs. Agostini is not present. Meeting stands adjourned.